Let's call this meeting of the Kokomo Common Council to order. The first item tonight will be a public hearing on ordnance 6833, which passed on first reading at the previous meeting. For those in the audience, this is not in reference to the Meridian Park. This is a different ordinance. Is there anyone, well, let's call role first, please?
Councilman Wyatt.
Here.
Councilman Cameron.
Here.
Councilwoman Young. Councilman Hayward.
Here.
Councilman Kennedy.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Here.
Councilwoman Weigart.
Here.
Councilwoman Sanders.
Here.
Okay. Would the clerk please read ordinance 6833 by title only?
An ordinance vacating two easements located in the city of Kokomo, Indiana.
Is there anyone on the council or anyone in the audience that would like to speak to ordinance 6833? Is there anyone in the audience or on the council that would like to speak to ordinance Last time, anyone in the audience or on the council that would like to speak to ordinance Thank you very much. At this time, the public hearing on ordinance 6833 is adjourned. This time, we'll go into our regular council meeting. Our next thing on the agenda will be invocation. You have the right to either stand or be seated. Tonight, we'll have giving invocation for the council. It will be Sayed Zara Badi from the Islamic Institute, and he'll be conducting our invocation. Would you please take the microphone?
On this way. I'm very sorry. I missed, what should I, I'm supposed to do prayer, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Should I, okay. In Islam, we have something called daily prayers. We do that five times a day. And the first one is, happens at dawn, which is about right now about 5:30, and it varies throughout the year. The second one is at noon. The third one is in afternoon. The fourth one is right at the sunset. And the last one is before we go to bed. And I'm gonna read just, when we actually do the prayers, it's done in Arabic language, just because of tradition. And it was done by the founder of this Islam, which is the Prophet Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. And we all have been told to perform it that way. I do that prayer, which is gonna be the shortest prayer, and I will try to give the translation of it, because the meat of it is gonna be what really that prayer means, what it's trying to convey, basically. Okay. So, should I begin?
Please.
All right. Before the prayer, we have to do some ablution. Ablution means you have to purify your body, clean. If, you know, if there's dirt or some kind of things that you have to wash away, you do that. And we do it for every prayer. And after that, I, I'm sorry, one of our members is trying to get here, I'm very, very sorry, just give me a second here. He's, he was, it's a first floor, actually.
City Hall.
City Hall. First floor, city hall, when you come to your north, to the south side. Yeah, please. No, 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 it's a city of, city hall. City, city hall. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm terribly sorry for that. We got an interested member who wants to be part of here. He's also my coworker. All right, I'm very sorry guys, just forgive me for that. So anyhow, this, we clean up, do ablution, of course. The purpose of that is to start cleaning up outward, which is your body, and then to make sure the inward also goes with it, your heart. So, clean up. So you get ready and you begin your, your, your salat. Salat means the prayer. Of course, before the salat starts, someone has to declare to the world that the salat is about to, to begin. Salat means connection, connection to God. So this is the, I'm gonna start doing that. And right before beginning of a salat, you do something called niyya. Niyya means you go inside your heart, you say, "God, help me to make a connection to you. I want to pray to you. I want to come to you." And you make that connection through your heart, and you begin with this. Bismillah Rahman Alaihim. In the name of God, the most gracious and the most merciful. Alhamdulillah Rabbil Aalameen. I praise the maker of the universe. Alhamdulillah Rabbil Aalameen. I praise the maker of the universe. Ar-Rahman Alaihim. This creator is very merciful and very forgiving. Maliki Yaumud Deen. It means he's the owner of everything, the universe. Everything you can see and everything you cannot see. Everything you can comprehend and everything you cannot comprehend. Iya Khanaabudu Wa Iya Khanaastain. I worship only you and only seek help from you, because you're the only one that can help. Anyone needs help comes to you, and no one can help. Anyone's help is temporary. And because of your benevolence, because of your mercy, they are able to help. Seraotalladina An Amte Alaihem. Gair Maqdoob Alaihem Walad Daliin. So give me the, the guidance in a path of those, our good actually, not the path of those who disobey you, and also the ones who committed injustice in the world. Please take me out of that group. So I'm here for, ask for your, for your help. That's called the first part of the prayer. And then you, that called by is of, is called surah. Surah it means a chapter, a small chapter. And then you, you do another chapter. And that chapter could vary, any part of the book I brought to you. You can select part of a chapter, you can select the whole chapter, it's up to you how ambitious you are, how much you wanna spend to him, with him. The question is, how eager are you to spend time with him? So, and then I have selected one more ayah, one more surah, which is a chapter to recite, which we gotta have two surahs, basically, in order to continue our prayer. Bismillah Rahman Alaihim. Allahu Allahu Had. This is the name, in the name of God, the most gracious and the most merciful. Allahu Allahu Had. Say, declare, confess that there's only one God. Allah Samed. He has no need, none whatsoever. He's needless. Everything, the world depends on Him, no one, for everything is need of Him. Lam Yalit Walam Yulit. He has never been bored, and He will never beget anything. He's above this world, He's not part of this world, because He gives you life, He takes life. He does not, He's part of this business of, business of the bringing life, to, to, to reject, it's not a part of regenerations. He makes life. Allahu Allahu Had. Allah Samed. Lam Yalit Walam Yulit Walam Yekun Lahu Kuf One Had. And if anything He wants, let's be, it is. His will is there. We finish with that, and then we, we go something that's called ruku. You see, when you quietly declare that, that the God is everything. Shubhanarabbil Aazim Wabahamdeh. He's the biggest. There's no word to describe Him, but that's how we have been told to describe Him. He's, He's, He's everything, He's giant. I can't, I don't have any word for it. And then you, you get up, and you go, it's called sajka. Shubhanarabbil Aalaa Wabahamdeh. Shubhanallah. Shubhanallah. Allah Akbar. It's, I frustrate you. You are the one, the only one who deserves presturations. Nobody deserves exception. The whole world will frustrate you. And you do it again. Shubhanarabbil Aalaa Wabahamdeh. Allah Akbar. You get up. Before you get, your heart has to be connected. You have to be with Him. Always that connection needs to happen. You get up, and you repeat the same first ayah, surah, which is Bismillah Rahman Alaihim. Alhamdulillah Rabbil Aalameen. Ar-Rahman Alaihim. Maliki Yaumud Deen. Iya Khanaabudu Wa Iya Khanaastain. Ihdinas Seraotam Mustaqeen. Seraotalladina An Amte Alaihem. Gair Maqdoob Alaihem Walad Daliin. You praise Him. You declare He's the owner of your, He's the most merciful, most forgiving, Him most loving. I only worship you, you're the only one that we worship. And the only one I, I ask for your guidance. No one can do that. Anybody's do is temporarily. Yours is permanent. And then, and even if someone does it because of your mercy, because after all, I am breathing because of Him. And then you keep essentially finishing that section, you go to the next section, which is the next ayah, and then you go again, something called sujud, the ruku, and then And then there's something called shahad. There's a lot of declaration and acknowledgement about what He has done. He has sent all the prophets. You declared them as the prophet, the Prophet Alaihissalam. And all the, all the, 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 the benevolence comes from Him. There's a lot of things you say in the process, and you finish with all those declarations. And you get up, and you are done. That was the shortest prayer of the day.
All right.
I am very sorry, I'm very sorry that I made a mistake, but I can do it again in front of you. I have to make sure that you guys see what we're doing. When we Muslims, we love all humanity, because you are the children of Him. You are my brothers and sisters, because we came from Adam. And one of the prayers of Islam is, you will never receive mercy, I'm never gonna receive mercy for your brother and sister. And you are my bride. And you are my sister.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd also like to say that it's my understanding the Islamic Institute was out working Saturday, helping people get trash thrown away and helping their neighbors in Kokomo. Thank you very much. All right. At this time, we'll have roll call, please.
Councilman Wyatt.
Here.
Councilman Cameron.
Here.
Councilwoman Young. Councilman Hayward.
Here.
Councilman Kennedy.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Here.
Councilman Weigart.
Here.
Councilwoman Sanders.
Here.
Councilman Micklic.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the council meeting of August the 8th.
So moved.
Motion has been made in second to approve the minutes of August the 8th. Is there anyone on the council or anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I do have some communication items to bring before the council in. Our next council meeting, this is important, folks in the audience, our next council meeting will be September the 12th, 2016, with an informational meeting at 5:30 PM in the Lox Room. Public hearing at 6 o'clock in the council chambers, which you're in now, and a council meeting immediately following. We will also have a public hearing for ordinance 6837, an ordinance vacating right away for September the 12th at 6 o'clock in the council chambers. At this time, we're going to go into what we call our general communication. If you're here to speak to the ordinance in regards to Meridian Park, I'd ask that you keep your comments until that ordinance comes on the floor. This time is for anyone to come forward and speak on pretty much what you want to. So if you do so, and keep this in mind when we get on the ordinance on Meridian Park, you must come forward, give your name and address, so it'll be part of the record. I think Councilman Micklic, you had something you wanted to?
I just wanted to share with the other council members, there is a school in Evansville, Indiana, called Resurrection, which is a private school, and they have 328 students that attend there as an elementary, and they have raised $2,000 to give to the school system Laura's Angels for the angel, tornado relief people, and students that have suffered through this. So they took it upon themselves, and I thought that was pretty remarkable. 328 kids, elementary kids from Evansville, Indiana, Resurrection, to give $2,000 to Laura's Angels at the high school. Incredible. Plus clothing and all the other things that we picked up on Sunday.
Councilman Kennedy?
Thank you.
Are you done, Councilman?
Yes, thank you.
Councilman Kennedy?
I just wanted to, on behalf of Councilman Hayward and myself, we were in the path of the storm, and we were very lucky. We didn't suffer some of the awful damage that a lot of homeowners did here in Kokomo. But what I wanted to say, I don't wanna think about them so much that, because we were able to get in our houses and be pretty much normal. The outpouring of support that came to this community, not only from those within the community, but from those outside of our community is just unbelievable. Our city workers, workers from other communities who came to this community to help, our young people, I saw so many young people out in the neighborhoods, just doing whatever they could do, and they worked hard. You know, it was hot and humid and, you know, sticky, and they just worked their tails off. Many of, many people just driving around offering water, some had sandwiches, you know, just whatever they could do. Our power companies, our contractors who worked to get power back, I think we're pretty close to getting most of it. You know, these crews, not, they weren't just local, you know, they were from all over the, all over the United States, basically. The ones that worked my alley were from Louisiana and West Virginia and Iowa, and one guy even had his dog with him. He just keeps his dog in the truck, and, you know, so I just wanted to thank everyone. I'm sure there's somebody, you know, our first responders. It was amazing that, that we didn't have serious injuries. You know, our properties can be rebuilt. Our items that we lost can be replaced, and we'll come back, because Kokomo's strong. And if you were a part of that cleanup, to help do that, I wanna thank all of you personally. So just, you know, there's still a lot to be done, and we keep our prayers for those who've lost everything, but they will come back too. So that's all I wanted to say. I just wanted to thank everyone who helped in the cleanup.
Thank you, Councilman Kennedy. I think it suffices to say we saw Kokomo at its best.
Right, Mr. President.
Helping people. Councilman Wyatt?
Yes, I spent two days at the civic center over there helping, and we wanna thank Shirley and Vernon Graves for just opening their door and let 220 people stay there for the weekend, because they didn't have no place to go. So their hearts are in the right place, trust me. And we wanna thank them personally, that they helped all these people, and they're still over there helping people. And, you know, everybody bringing food in there, the Red Cross, I've seen it personally myself, and it was pretty nice. Pretty nice to see the people step up and help others that needed help. And I just wanna thank them.
I just wanna add one thing.
Yes, please.
When I worked at the convention center one day, one man just, oh, when I worked at the convention center one day, my sister and I, it was such a blessing, and one of the gentlemen, he just, he was, had been out and working and, and difficult situations, and, you know, he said, "Well, it's so wonderful when a community can come together, and we might not agree on everything, but you know what, we can work together, and we come together when there's, when there's an issue, when there's a tragedy." So it was a blessing to do that. So again, I just echo those thanks to everybody.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience that has anything to communicate to the council at this time? Okay, hearing none. Is there any committee, committee reports to come before the council? I think next week, we have our first.
Yes, we do.
Budget hearings. We don't get very many people to come to budget hearings. We're doing good to get any more than three. So you're all welcome to come back. I mean, we're gonna talk about millions of your tax dollars.
5:30.
And how they're gonna be spent. But seems to be other things have more importance, so that's okay. All right. But you're welcome to come back. At this time, we'll get into our first ordinance. This is not the one. I promise, I will let you know when we come to the one on Meridian Park. Okay? All right. Before we get into the meat of it, I'm gonna set some ground rules. And I'm very strict about this. No booing, no applauding. You keep your negative comments to yourself, just like mom taught you and grandma taught you. You treat everyone's comments with respect, whether you agree or disagree with them. If you cannot do that, and I've never had to do it, I will ask individuals to leave and/or clear the entire room. We'll give everyone three minutes to say what you've got to say, which means you need to get to your point, be brief, and get your message across to us in three minutes. We'll have a timer, and we'll let you know when your time's up. And we'd ask everyone to adhere to those rules. Okay? Other than that, we're gonna have a good meeting, you'll get your points across, and everyone will be heard that needs to be heard. One thing I'd caution you, if we keep hearing the same thing over and over and over, try to come with some new ideas and bring them forward to us so we can hear them. Okay? All right. Would the clerk please read ordinance 6833 by title only?
An ordinance vacating two easements located in the city of Kokomo, Indiana, second reading.
Thank you. Councilman Weigert?
Mr. President, I move for passage of ordinance 6833 on second reading.
Motion has been made in second to pass ordinance 6833 on first reading. Councilman Weigert?
As mentioned, there are two easements located at 309 South Union Street and 322 South Main Street that need to be vacated. This actually ties into the Flaherty and Collins mixed-use facility going on just down the road. So in order to keep the momentum going, I do urge council to pass ordinance 6833 on second reading.
Okay. Is there any questions from anyone on the council or anyone in the audience in regards to ordinance 6833? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Sheeline, excuse me, Director Sheeline? I just wanna make a clarification, ordinance 6837 is part of the Meridian. It's a vacation right of way located in the city of Kokomo.
I don't have any vacations.
Okay, but, okay, I, because I'm trying to be truthful to everybody. All right.
Mr. President, it's adjacent, has nothing to do with, for a part.
It has nothing to.
It's just adjacent.
It's adjacent. Thank you very much. Okay. At this time, would the clerk please read ordinance 6837 by title only?
An ordinance vacating right-of-way location in the city of Kokomo, Indiana, first reading.
Thank you. Councilman Weigert?
Mr. President, I move for ordinance of, or I move for passage of ordinance 6837 on first reading.
What?
Councilman Weigert?
Just to give a little bit of legal description, it is a 14-foot alley lying between lots 85 and 86 on the west and lots 93, 94 on the east and Oakland addition to the city of Kokomo, as recorded in Recorder's Plat Book 2, page 85. Just as an understanding of what this is, vacating the above right-of-way is appropriate for the following reasons. The petitioner owns interest in real estate adjoining the right-of-way to be vacated. Vacating the right-of-way will not hinder or interfere with public's access to any of the adjoining real estate. The proposed vacation of the right-of-way will not hinder the growth or development in the neighborhood, but will allow the petitioner to redevelop and grow within the neighborhood. And vacating the right-of-way will facilitate the development of all real estate in the affected block. And last but not least, this has no bearing on ordinance 6841 of Meridian Park.
Thank you. A motion has been made to pass ordinance 6837, and it has been supported. Is there anyone on the council or in the audience would like to speak to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Would the clerk at this time read ordinance 6338 by title only? 6838. I'm just seeing if he's paying attention. All right, go ahead.
An ordinance fixing the maximum salaries of appointed officers, deputies, assistants, department heads, uniform police and fire, and employees of the city of Kokomo, Indiana, for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2017, and ending December 31st, 2017. Be it ordained by the common council of the city of Kokomo, Indiana, as follows, first reading.
Councilman Kennedy?
I move for passage of ordinance 6838 on first reading.
Support. Councilman Kennedy?
This is our salary ordinance for 2017 for city employees. You will notice if you look down through all the listing, raises would be according to any contracted agencies, that would be police, fire, ASME, that have contracts with the city, and it would be accordance to the contracts that have been negotiated with those three organizations. Non-contractuals, this particular ordinance shows no raise for those individuals, and I urge that the council pass this ordinance on first reading.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Kennedy. A motion has been made to pass ordinance 6838 on first reading. Is there anyone on the council or in the audience that would like to speak to this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Would the clerk please read ordinance 6839 by title only?
An ordinance fixing the salaries of elected city officials of the city of Kokomo, Indiana, effective January 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2017, first reading.
Councilman Kennedy?
I urge for passage of ordinance 6839 on first reading.
Support. Thank you. All right, Councilman Kennedy?
This ordinance is also a salary ordinance, but it is for the elected officials, which include the mayor, the city clerk, and the common council. It reflects no raises. As a matter of fact, it still reflects the same salaries that were in the ordinance in 2007. I do wanna note that Mayor Goodnight voluntarily accepted salary payments at the 2007 level of $79,754. I urge for passage of this ordinance on first reading.
Thank you. Motion has been made to pass ordinance 6839 on first reading, has been supported. Anyone in the audience or on the council would like to speak to this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, this is the ordinance in regards to Meridian Park. Would the clerk please read ordinance 6841 by title only?
Rezoning PR to M2, location 500 East Harrison Street. Petitioner, city of Kokomo, first reading.
Councilman Weigert?
Mr. President, I move for passage of ordinance 6841 on first reading.
Support.
Councilman Weigert?
This is, as mentioned, is a rezoning. I came from the city of Kokomo being the petitioner, and recommended that the planning commission, which gave a favorable recommendation of a 5-4, rezone and reclassify this area from PR, Parks and Recreation, to M2, which is general multifamily residential, for the property described at 500 East Harrison Street. I do, if you don't mind, Mr. President, approach the microphone.
While he's getting set up, I wanna let everyone know the order of appearance here. I will let Councilman Weigert talk, as he's sponsoring the ordinance. I will let Councilman Weichert talk as he's sponsoring the ordinance. I will give the petitioner, which is the city of Kokomo, an opportunity to come forward, and then anybody that is remonstrating, which means against or for, you get the last word. Okay?
Just to point out, so that everybody can see into the council, and it's the same thing that you can see up here, uh, you can see that this rezoning, that the actual facility itself only takes up fifteen percent of the park, um, and so you can see where the location is. Everything else still remains the same, um, and so there is some green space. I'm going to leave more of the information to be talked about from the city of Kokomo about the detail of this, but just so everyone can see the actual draw-up of this, and so the council can see the draw-up. I know each one of you have your own handouts as well. Uh, there was quite a bit of concern, but I think there have been some alleviations of some of those concerns, but they are up here if you want to take a look at them as you're addressing the council, uh, either in favor or opposition to it.
Thank you, Councilman Weichert. This time, I'll have the petitioner come forward and make comments if they so choose.
Thank you, President Hayes, members of the council. My name is David Tharp. I'm the deputy mayor of the city of Kokomo. Um, I will be brief. I know there's some folks who want to speak tonight. Um, the city of Kokomo and the administration fully supports this project and this redevelopment because the redevelopment, or excuse me, the, um, the rezoning of this allows for a project that fits many needs in our community. Um, it's a great way for the city of Kokomo to partner with Bonavista to help build supportive housing for disabled adults. Um, and I do want to be clear, make no mistake, make no mistake about it, uh, if this land is not rezoned, um, then one point five million dollars in grant money in the ability to house thirteen developmentally disabled adults, uh, that goes away. There is not another option, um, on the table for this. Um, there is currently a housing shortage in Kokomo, uh, that was actually exacerbated by the events of last week. I believe Jill Dunn, when she speaks, will talk about how that impacted their agency specifically. Um, the reason why this is a good fit, we believe, for Meridian Park is this actually under, uses, this redevelops an underutilized section of the park. Um, it maintains all the amenities of the park, so the pavilion, the basketball court, the benches, the bell, um, the swing set, all of those features remain. Um, and there will be some enhancements that can go along. Anytime you invest one point five million dollars in one side of the park, that is going to bleed over into some new developments and reinvestment in the rest of the park. It's a good fit for the residents that will live in this development. Again, this is for developmentally disabled adults. It's important that they have access to the amenities of the park, that they're able to interact with, with, with folks in the park, and then also use, uh, features like public transportation, which has a stop right in front of this facility, and then close proximity to the features of downtown Kokomo and the municipal stadium. Uh, I do want to talk about the fact that this is, uh, as Councilman Weichert mentioned, this is only built on a fraction of the, the land of the park. Um, so if you look at the project as a whole, uh, that this rezoning allows, um, I think that's the, the proper way to contextualize the information you're going to get. Um, this is a, uh, an important amenity, um, for a, a segment of our community that needs support and needs housing. Um, and I'll actually allow, uh, I'll see part of my time to Jill Dunn from Bonavista to talk about exactly what this development will do for developmentally disabled adults and her...
Before I do that, Jill, if you could hold one moment, I-
Yep.
-I want to let Councilman Cameron, uh, say a few words, please.
Yeah, this, uh, this enhancement to that park, you know, after fact, sounds great, but prior to all this, there was no transparency to myself or the people in the community. And it went like a lead balloon. You got in, we're in a catch twenty-two right here. What is taking part in there for those people is something that's like the people's going to be, that's displaced right now, the tornado, they have nowhere to go. But the other side of it, that park has been let go for years. I did not know until two weeks ago that water found it anymore. And looking at that park, it has a lot to be desired. If we're going to enhance the Bonavista, that whole park needs to be enhanced for the people in there, even bringing back the crafts and arts that once was there, that was let go. You know, if there's nothing in the park for kids, kids won't go. And I can remember that park when I went to St. Joan of Arc, that was a, that place used to be packed with basketball courts and everything, softball diamond, all that. But it's, it's, it's got me in a quandrum. I was not happy when I found out, uh, what was going on, and, uh, I understand what needed to be done in here, but the people in that area felt like they were second-class citizens from the standpoint, they did not know anything about it, nor did I, the councilman that represents that area. And I told the people in there, and it's a tough situation for them. Uh, a few of them said, "If they would have come to us first, we could have sat down and worked something out." But it, that's all after fact now, but I hope we learned something from this lesson here. Don't hide something from people. I mean, or even for the representative councilman from that area or councilwoman, uh, they need to be involved, transparency needs to be. This may not have seemed like, uh, monumental to some people, but it was for the people that use that park. And I know a lot of them said, "Well, I drive by there and I don't see anybody there." Well, there isn't too much in there, you know? Even the playground equipment, there is nothing underneath those swings or that if one of the children would fall or could scrape like we have in other parks. It was a park that was let go. You know, it was once a school, used to be, once a little proud school in that area. And that bell, one thing about, it's got to stay where it is. Uh, I talked to the mayor about it, and you know, said, "Well, maybe we can put it in hands, we can put it in there." But that's, that's the school from that bell. There's a lot of memories from the people in there. But, uh, I was very disappointed being on the outside looking in on this when everybody else knew it, that was involved in it. But I understand where the people are right now, but, uh, you gotta look at what, what can come out of this. It can be a good working relationship in the community. That facility, that I understand, has got, gonna have a generator, and if something goes out in your neighborhood, I was told that that could go in there and in that community area where it's going to be, whether it's hot or cold, uh, be able to be in that area for comfort. But I think we need to look down our bootstraps and look about what just happened here, how many people displaced now. Do we want to displace these thirteen people, or how many are we going to have in there? And, you know, there are no differences in you and I, they're just in a different role. You know, circumstances happen. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, actually, I'll, I'll be happily, if the council doesn't have any other specific questions, I'd be happy to turn it over to Jill Dunn to talk more about the project.
You relinquish your time?
Relinquish my time.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, everybody. I'm Jill Dunn. I'm president of Bonavista Programs. Thank you for the time. I hope we can make this a win for everybody. It's unfortunate that we're in this position, but I will tell you, Bonavista lived through our second tornado, two thousand thirteen. We lost a building, and Wednesday, late afternoon, Laguna Street looked like your brush with bristles sticking out of it. And, uh, then it started to rain, and, uh, our ceiling tiles fell in, and we had one heck of a mess. We opened today. In that building was two hundred infants and toddlers, and my fantastic staff, where many of them are here tonight, um, were calm and took care of the children. As it ended, parents came rushing in, of course, terrified of what they might find, and all was good. One of the things that also happened to us, several other of our facilities were hit, and you talked about the generator. We have housing for seventy-three supported living adults, some are here, and then we have, uh, six group homes in Kokomo, two in Peru, eight people in a home. And we sustained almost all of them in their homes. The ones that couldn't be in their homes, we put generators in, and, um, through the efforts of my staff, we were able to be fully functioning. Community members, you need to understand, we're not here to take anything away from here. We're here to give to you. We're going to be giving back to you. We are going to be part of your family. Many of my adults have no one in their lives, and you would become their family, their friends. Holidays could be celebrated with you. The community room that Councilman Cameron talked about would be for use for some of you as well through scheduled times and activities that we would also throw, that we would hope you would involve yourselves in. In the event we have thunderstorms or lightning, or God forbid, another tornado, we would have generators there that you would be invited in to come and stay there till it was safe for you to leave and you had power on in your house. We're not here to take from you, we're here to give to you. Our adults want to interact with you in the community. They want to play sports with you, they want to eat lunch with you, they want to just sit and chat with you. The space we're taking is about thirty-seven percent of that property. It's a small piece that we're taking to add a lot of levity and promise to thirteen developmentally disabled adults. Now, you're going to hear me very quickly, this is my mantra. Any one of us could have a children with developmental delays. This morning, when I went by early childhood, I was looking into one of the classrooms, and some of the special needs children were playing, and I looked down at them, and I thought, "They're going to be adults in the city of Kokomo someday, and someday, I hope we're going to have available housing for them, available, affordable, safe housing for them that we can be very proud to offer to them." That could be your children. Some of you talk about wanting to be foster parents. We have many, many, many foster children attending Bonavista programs who may someday grow up and also need housing. Any one of us could have a child with a developmental delay. Any one of us could have a child who is typical running down the street, get hit by a car, or become gravely ill, who then will have a developmental delay that will need our services. We are an important part of the community, and we want to give back to you and make you part of the Bonavista family. Um, some gentleman, I don't see him here this evening, asked me about our employees. Who do we employ at Bonavista? We employ very special people, people who love giving back. They're servant leaders, they're here to serve. And right now, I'd like to introduce you to one of the people that work with our employees. Her name is Grace Miller, and Grace is here with her daughter Naomi this evening. Hi, Naomi. And her daughter. And Grace has a few things she'd like to say.
Good evening, councilmen. My name is Grace Miller. I am the director at Bonavista, the HR director at Bonavista Programs. I am speaking today because Jill has received some questions about staff that we hire and the people that we serve. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to provide additional information about our hiring process, the people we employ, as well as the people that we serve. Since I have the honor of working directly and hiring with our staff, I would like to respond to these concerns and give the opportunity at the end of this dialogue, if there are any remaining questions. So I understand that we are the first neighbors that are asking to move in, but unlike many neighbors that may move in, these neighbors have some certainties. There are few times in life that we have the opportunity to preview our neighbors, not to mention the opportunity presented here to vote, um, on the neighbors that you could potentially have. I will, if I, if I can, share a brief, personal story about, um, my neighbors when I lived in a home, um, in New Hampshire. My husband and I purchased our first home, and my understanding, and we understood that the property next to ours was a rental property. Several months after we moved into our new home, new rentals moved, new renters moved into that property. They immediately hung a blanket in their window as a curtain. The blanket had a cartoon character of what appeared to be like the Airheads candy packaging. Around the picture, the blanket said, "I will kill you." Um, and that really happened. And some may see this as hostile, but these are, but there was absolutely nothing I could do about it at the time. I tell you this story to contrast with the potential neighbors that you will be moving in next to you and give, um, if you give Bonavista the opportunity for this project, to offer assurances that these people serve have some degree of certainty with them. They are not hostile. They will not bring illegal activities with them, quite the opposite. The proposed homes will be for a quiet segment of the community, and this segment requires twenty-four-hour staffing. So how, what does that mean to you? If, this means that somebody will be present and, present and awake in the homes twenty-four hours a day. All staff are required to pass multiple background checks before gaining employment with Bonavista. By law, our staff is not allowed to have any convictions that could endanger the people that we serve. And this regulation protection will, um, extend to you once the project has been approved. This means that our staff, your potential neighbors, cannot have convictions of any drug-related offenses or even a misdemeanor battery charge. As Jill mentioned, Bonavista has quite a reputation for increasing home values in the area where we build and develop. This means your home values will increase as we maintain this property. Let's talk about the Bonavista properties in light of the recent tornadoes. Bonavista responded immediately, and our maintenance team worked out throughout the weekend to get people back into their homes and continue to operate. Our staff has been outstanding in the wake of the storm. I cannot say enough about how they responded. Another benefit that Bonavista's project offers to you, the, the community room that has already been discussed with the generator. Upon completion of the project, the community room, um, and the power sources will be available if you lost power. Dead cell phone, no longer a problem that you have to solve. Additionally, we can offer jobs in the neighborhood. How wonderful would it be to walk to work, save time and money? We have immediate openings available for caregivers of the developmentally disabled, provided you pass the background checks. Um, we will have additional jobs available in your neighborhood once the project opens. If you're interested, please come see me afterwards so I can discuss this with you more. Before you say, "Not in my backyard," I would ask that you really think about the benefits that this can bring to your backyard. This project can be really positive for your community, and if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. Happy to take questions, thank you. Any questions? Oh, question. Can I take questions from the audience? Is that allowed?
No.
No? All right.
The person that wants to ask the question, they can come up, give their name and address, and speak, okay? All right. Okay, at this time, I'm opening up to the, to the audience. When you come to the microphone, give your name and address, and, uh, let's, let's go.
My name is Jason Franzat, seven forty-eight South Bell Street. I live directly across from the park. For me tonight, I, I think you've pretty well probably all made your decisions, but I hope that you'll look at this. I've went throughout the community of my neighbors and talked to them, and for us, this is not a question of whether or not Bonavista should be able to build in our neighborhood. It is not a question of whether or not the city should help Bonavista where it can. Every single one of my neighbors that I talk to believes that we can, believes that we should. I have an uncle in New York State that has schizophrenia. He lives in homes that are like this. I've worked in this industry, my mom works in the industry. That is not the issue to me. The issue to me is that a public park and a community park is a valuable commodity and resource to that area. It is what unites the neighbors in our community, and I personally feel that it is very, very wrong for us to go into that park and to take any portion of that and remove it from access. That's where I take my kid to fly his kite, it's where I take my kid to learn baseball, it's where I hope to play with him and his friends to play football. And if we build stuff on there, we can't take it back. And if we start down that path in Kokomo, showing, I traveled the world with my last job, all over the United States. I'll tell you, Kokomo's got one of the best parks department ever. I moved from New York State here, have no regrets because our parks are great. We are small communities that come together and help each other. Um, I've broken so far from what I wanted to say, but to me, that is the question, is, is it really worth it? We've got other land in Kokomo that can be developed on, and I know that they need this land now in order to get the grant, but if we'd have come earlier, I could have helped fundraise, we could have found land that could have been purchased, could have been given away. Um, so I have with me a folder that I'll hand out. I was going to have copies for everybody, uh, but unfortunately, the neighbor and the guy that I am, I took off to help with the tornado stuff. I didn't get none of it done. But in here, you'll find a petition, uh, to the, by parents of kids all over the community that are going to be affected by the removal of this piece of property. Uh, there's a map that outlines the number of trees in our park that have to be destroyed in order to build this building, and there's two safety concerns in there with the current design, uh, that probably could be addressed, but to me, they are major safety concerns, especially regarding the, the way that the driveway enters directly behind the pavilion. Um, but the three questions I have for the city council are, can we as a city not find a way to help without taking community parks away from our people? I think we're a better city than that. And is it really right to take a portion of land in a community and develop it to meet needs that the city sees when most of the community affected doesn't agree with that decision? And really, ultimately, I asked this at the planning commission, if it was your park and your neighborhood and your neighbors, would you stand by and just let it happen? I don't think you would. I stand for what's right. In the end, if we take it and we have to find a way to make the park better, that's what we got to do, but thank you.
Good evening, Council. Randy Morris, 115 South Western Avenue, and also Park Superintendent. And something else that I think needs to be noted, I was also a six-year member of the Bonavista Board of Directors, so I have some personal interest in their client base and their success. I would like to thank you for pointing out, we do have a good park system. Thank you very much. But Mr. Cameron pointed out some very obvious things that we do have a lot of parks that we need to maintain. We have 34 parks in our system, and some of them are better kept than others. But at no point have I ever received any kind of complaints or comments about Meridian Park being unkept or not to satisfactory needs. So, I think that's important to point out. As far as the transparency issue, the park does a master plan every five years, and it was conducted in 2014 concerning the status of the park system. During that master plan, there is a part for public comment. And during the public comment, there was actually zero references to Meridian Park for or against that park. So, everyone had the public input time to actually speak out for or against things that are going on in Meridian Park. Also available on the park website is the master plan that I'm referencing, and I'd like to quote from page 13 of that master plan, that funding, acquisition, and maintenance, and this is under the stakeholder portion of this where public made comments, that funding, acquisition, and maintenance was another common theme. Several people mentioned the need to review the usage and maintenance of parkland and consider selling or giving away some of the smaller parks that are underutilized or not used at all. So, as far as transparency goes, the public has given us input about the current status of our park system and exactly what we are looking at doing moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Jerry Paul. I live at 1326 South Webster. A couple of weeks ago, I was contacted by Councilman Cameron, and then a couple of days later, I was contacted by the CEO, Jill Dunn, of Bonavista. Now, it's obvious I don't live in that neighborhood, but I am active in the community, in the veterans community, and some other aspects of it. I do not speak, and I want this for the record, I do not speak for all the veterans organizations, nor ever I have. I always, I'm the president of the Howard County Veterans Memorial Corporation at Darrell Chapel Park, and that's, you know, one of my concerns is. I think the reason I got called is they were concerned about the veterans' input, and Mr. Cameron knew me, and I think some of the neighbors were wanting some veterans' input on this. I've never looked at that park, and it's not in the best shape that I've seen a park in. It needs some help. But I came up with an 11-point proposal that I think will help everybody get something out of this, and there's no, as I always say, winners and losers. Everybody can be a winner on this. Number one, the Vietnam Veterans Shelter needs a new metal roof and a paint job. It's not in very good condition. Roof's been banged up, and there's some graffiti in there. Number two, two new handicap picnic tables from recycled plastic, and I've been working on this for three years. There was two ladies from that neighborhood that came here about three years ago, and I want to apologize to them. It's not that I forgot you, it just takes you a long time to collect 1,200 pounds of plastic. The neat thing about this part is I've got Bon Air School onboard, and the veterans will pay for the picnic tables. I've already got a commitment from them. A new regulation-sized basketball court, because that basketball court, to be honest with you, I went and looked at it, looks like it was built on the foundation of a building. I just didn't understand the configuration of that. New sidewalk with the light poles with hanging flower baskets to match what we got out of our park. New playground equipment, barbecue pit area on the east side of the shelter, new restrooms with outdoor water spigots, new modern trash cans, butterfly garden, new water fountains, like Mr. Cameron said, neither one of them work. I talked to Mr. Corbin, he'll look into this, and I think this, even if there's, the legality of this is not doable, I think it's something that needs to be addressed. A written guarantee from the city of Kokomo and Bonavista that there will be no future expansion of that facility on the remaining park property. That way, they don't live in constant fear that, okay, we got this much, we got 33%, now we need 40 or 45. I do agree with the gentleman that lives in the neighborhood, having looked at that, and I've got that blueprint, I've got it off the city about a week ago, that driveway on the south side, if you can put it on the northwest side, because you've got a safety issue right there. All right, thank you.
We all have received copies of your proposal.
Councilman, may I make a comment?
Sure.
Just for Councilmen, keep in mind, we're just looking at the rezoning, not the actual structure that could be built. So, that would, all the driveways and all those different things would be done at another time. So, you know, there's plenty of time for changes in those aspects. This is strictly the rezoning of the property, not the actual construction of the building. That would have to go back through the planning commission, and for all those approvals, site plans, and all the various items that would go along with that if it was passed. So, I just want to remind everybody.
Councilman Kennedy makes a good point. We're not here to mediate. We're here to pass an ordinance on zoning. Name and address, please.
My name is Edna Smith. I live at 1901 Pleasant Drive, Kokomo, but I am the directress of the Gopie Garden Montessori School, which is a block away from the park, which we do use frequently, if the weather I would like to take issue. I have called many times about needs for that park, including cleanups, and I myself and our volunteers have come down and painted over bad graffiti so our children wouldn't have to see it. And we do care about that park. We do care about the space to run for our children. We have, over the years, eked out the money to build a raised bed garden on our parking lot, but it doesn't take the place for children just running in the grass. And I'm here to speak for the children that I serve and the neighborhood children that we meet there when we go down for a visit to the park. You know, I feel it is my community as well, because we've been in that facility, it used to be the old St. Joan of Arc school, for 11 and a half years, and we have loved that park. And I have called and spoken of the non-working water fountains and why isn't there a restroom? We participated in arts and crafts that they took away a few years ago. And, you know, we went down and got permission from the parents and participated in water spray one time. I only had it once. But I just want to speak for the children who use the park. And I do know, and I didn't see Mr. Ho Shaw here, but Acacia Academy also uses that park, and they have some larger children that practice soccer and sports there very frequently.
We did receive a letter from Mr. Ho Shaw.
Okay. Okay, and I do want to also mention that we've used it for many community projects, our picking up trash, our having Easter egg hunts, and taking vegetables from our garden down and giving it to community people that come through the park. So, it is a very important hub for us, for the community, too. And I think the part that I understand, and I admire Bonavista and what they do in our community. I've had foster children that have received beautiful care there, and I have nothing against them. I think they're very great, and we're blessed to have this small of a city, to have that nice of a program available to our citizens. But I also know, I've seen a lot of empty and heard of many houses in areas that are going to be taken down and things rebuilt. Why couldn't we have that? And I do want to mention, I'm sure you've already heard, all that property behind the Laguna Street complex seems like it could be made into a beautiful place. That's all I have to say. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Ms. Is there anyone else?
Call the question.
Okay, here's been a question on the motion. Is there anybody from the council that has anything to add?
I would, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
I just want to say, I'm relatively new to this. I've only been in the council for about eight months. But as a private citizen before, I've seen a lot of development come into the community and really be naysay, and told, "No, we can't do that." Going from one-way to two-way streets, you know, the Kokomo Municipal Stadium, and a number of housing projects that we've had come into our community, and they've been amazingly successful. And I see this as an absolute win-win. The way I look at it is it's taking a property off of the city tax roll that we have to maintain, that we have to cut the grass, we have to send people out there, and giving it to an organization that's been so entrenched in our community, not just in our community, but surrounding communities as well. This is an amazing thing for Kokomo, for the neighborhood, for Bonavista. I think it's a wonderful opportunity. I think we're going to be able to provide 13 people with something that no one in surrounding areas can even do. So, I applaud this. I think it's a wonderful effort. And I know that as we grow, it's going to be difficult at times. These will be growing pains, but we have to continue to be competitive, and this is how we do that. And I just applaud what Bonavista does and what they're going to continue to do, and the fact that they're taking this multimillion-dollar project and reinvesting it in our community, not going to Tipton or Hamilton County or where else. They're bringing it back to us, and I appreciate that.
Councilman Mickley. Thank you, Mr. President. From what I've heard, I think this is a really, a gross failure of communication. I agree with the residents. I agree with the city in wanting to support Bonavista. I agree with Mr. Cameron. In fact, I think, I talked to Mr. Cameron, and I was so upset that I read it in the newspaper before anybody else knew about it, and I certainly didn't know about it, because we didn't communicate very well. So, if this is nothing more than a classic case of how to communicate in your community, I think we all have a lesson to learn here. I think green space is absolutely valuable. I spent eight years on the park board. I've spent, I know I personally and can document, 15,000 miles I've run in Highland Park, and not near that much in Jackson Marrow Park, and I was on the school board when Meridian School Park was given to the city. So, when you look at it and you think about what we're talking about here tonight, we're talking about communicating with each other. If parks aren't being kept up, there are community members that use that park that will volunteer to come and cut the grass. Cutting grass is not a reason to give away a park. If you, on the other hand, say, "Well, look at the green space in our community. Look at what we've got. We want to be inclusive, and we want people to come to our community," then we have to look at the green space we give them, the neighborhoods it's located in, and what we do for the people from Bonavista who also have to have a place to live. I am very attached to these homes and to Bonavista and support it. But I'll tell you what, I am not attached to the way we communicate. A five-year master plan, as pointed out by the park superintendent, I've done that master plan. I've sat there, and nobody from the public shows up, okay? Now, how many people knew that the master plan was being redone? That's a question, okay? So, at that point, there's another opportunity to voice your input with the city and with the park superintendent. I'm telling you, we have a wonderful city. We have dedicated people that are not afraid to speak up, and you have to value that. At the same time, we have to value the ability to come together and share that knowledge with each other in an unemotional and a data-filled environment. You know, my question is, how many kids use that park? Nobody can tell me. How many kids live in that neighborhood? I still haven't heard a number. I know how many kids Acacia has. I have no idea how many Montessori has. Okay? We don't track that. So, from my point of view, this has never been about Bonavista. This has always been about a park, always. And I believe that if you look at real estate and you look at the highest and best use, it probably is a good thing for Bonavista to share that space. But people, you know, to come together and share it before I read it in the newspaper in the morning is what I expect, because I don't expect for somebody to print it in the newspaper and say, "Swallow hard, pal, it's yours." Because you know what? I don't swallow very well. If you want to get my input and you want to work with me, I am a reasonable, except, don't ask my wife, but I think I'm reasonable. My wife may not agree with that. But at the end of the day, you know, facts speak for themselves. So, as far as that goes, Mr. President, that's all I've got to share. I think we can all improve our communications here. Could I have the park superintendent stand up and come back up to the mic? Have you taken any kind of gauge of how much green space we have in current parks right now?
In the complete park system?
Yes.
That's hard to put an exact number to. We're over 400 acres currently, but that is not inclusive of all the miles of trails that we maintain. The park superintendent and the park system is also responsible for the cemetery. So, it's a number, but 400 acres for actual mowing. We have recently been doing some plantings, as most of you are aware, in our Jackson Marrow Park to reduce the amount of mowing that we currently do in that park in particular. We've reduced the mowing there by almost 20% by the reforestation project, as well as the wildflower pollinator garden that was planted around some of our wooded areas. So, this is something that we are doing to better maintain all of our parks and return them into more park-like settings.
And after hearing some of the concerns about the condition of Meridian Park, will there be plans to take a look at those concerns?
Oh, absolutely. And actually, I've already texted people to, they may be on it right now. So, and we do address all concerns. Mr. Cameron has given me some concerns about parks. I think I've spoke with most all of you about a park that's in your area. And we do have a lot of parks. We do our best to maintain all of our parks to the same standards. As the patronage in parks increases, so does the maintenance levels. I've personally, since this issue has arisen, been in Meridian Park quite frequently, and I've pretty much been by myself.
So, if nothing else, it's getting some attention, a lot.
It's getting more attention than it was receiving, absolutely.
It's a good thing. All right. Communication on board, on park board meetings are public notice, is that correct?
Absolutely.
People can come?
Absolutely.
And I encourage anyone in the audience, if he doesn't keep his word, take, put his feet to the fire. Come to the board meetings. Come to the council meetings.
Randy, I have one question.
Hate to put you on the spot.
Yeah, thanks, Bob. Appreciate that.
I have one question.
Yes, Councilman Sanders.
Do you watch KGOV? And I share many of the sentiments that my fellow council members made. On KGOV, do you have those on KGOV?
The park board meetings?
Yes.
No, we don't. It's at 7:00 a.m.
I know when it is.
Okay.
I just wondered.
And we don't get a lot of attendance. You're all invited if you'd like to attend. It's a lively group at 7:00 a.m. So, our day starts early. So, but no, and it is a huge responsibility to take care of all the parks that we have. By per capita, we rank as one of the most park space per capita in almost any city inside of Indiana. We do very well in the United States about the amount of park space we currently have and amenities that we offer to folks, so.
Okay, I encourage you, after the meeting, find out when the next park meeting is.
Next Tuesday, 7:00 a.m., Park Department.
7:00 a.m., maybe he'll have some company there, and he'll probably have donuts for you. He's not buying donuts? And this will be, we're going to, there has been a question on the motion on the floor, and it has been second, but I will allow you to.
Thank you. Just one more thing. This is becoming a great walkable community, and one of the things that this house that Grace alluded to, this group of homes, is we're going to be looking for people to work in these homes, and I'm hopeful that some of you or people that you know will apply and be part of our system. The other thing we offer is that you can all take part in is early childhood through our courses, through our early head start. We have childcare solutions that comes to childcare facilities and helps with licensing, and we'll show you where you can find grants to develop some green space at your location. So, we're, there's a lot of resources here that we can offer to all of you, and I just want to remind people that we're not just building houses or homes for 13 developmentally disabled adults. We're We're offering the neighborhood some tremendous resources that we hope, if this is passed, you'll take a look at. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay, send a motion on the floor out. Just out of courtesy to you, sir, I will let you have the last word.
All right. I just want to address Mr. Micklack. I think I said that right. You said you never got a number for the kids. I can't give you an exact number, but before the planning committee, I did walk around to let people know that there was a plan to rezone, to encourage people to get there. And when people signed the first petition saying that we didn't want anything built there, I walked about four blocks on that first one, counting kids and grandkids. That accounted for about 97. With the rest of the families included into that on the petitions that I raised, if you just accounted for one kid per family, you'd be looking at about 200 or so at least kids that are in the park, just so you have a rough idea.
Mr. President, may I say something? May I say something?
Go ahead.
I've been driving that park ever since this come up. I've been driving by it three or four times today. I've been in the park. I've walked through the park a couple of times. We've talked. I hardly ever see any children in that park playing. I drive morning, noon, evening. Some days, I drive four times. Very seldom seeing the kids playing in the park. And I was one of them that didn't like it at first, but I never see any kids in that park.
There are three houses down from that park.
Whoa, 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 whoa. But I'm telling you...
If you can't come to the microphone and speak, hold your peace.
I wanted to personally, myself, check this park out. And I will continue going by, driving this park and seeing how many children's in this park. But, sir, I hardly ever... There was a number of times, nobody was in the park, even when I walked in. I've walked in twice and talked to the neighbors.
Counselor, there has been a question called on the floor.
Second.
And it has been second. Being that there's been a question on the motion, it's been second, I will have to call for a vote. All those in favor of the question on the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, all those in favor of passage of ordinance 6841, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, there will be a second reading on this ordinance on September the 12th at 6:00 PM. This meeting is adjourned, and there's no further business to come before this council.